Okay, here we are. This is the October 26 meeting, the Public Works and Finance Committee, and we're going to start right off with approval of the October 12 minutes.
I would agree to approve them.
Me too.
Me three, so the minutes stand approved. Next item is a dispersment report being presented to us by Don Palmer.
Oh, this is fun.
Okay, now that we're done with that one, Don apparently is running a little late here, so we'll move on to number three, and Michael Ray will present a proposed amendment of Title IV, Chapter 5. It has to do with the flood hazard areas within the city limits of Moscow. Hello, Michael.
Good evening, gentlemen.
You got skip, you go to the end.
You know what? Train left the station at 3:00. That did, I went by that clock. All right, anyway, Michael, go ahead.
Just wanted to brief the committee on an upcoming amendment to the zoning code, which is going to be coming before council on November 16th. So, what I wanted to discuss was the flood hazard areas amendment within the city. So, on your screen behind you there, we've got two regulatory floodways within Moscow. We've got Paradise Creek that transects the city. We also have the South Fork of the Palouse River by Palouse River Drive, south of that area, that goes through a portion of the city. So, I always like to take this time to highlight, in 2013, we had a letter of map revision for some channel work that was done as part of the Recreation Center project. And this is what the floodplain used to look like in that area, so we're looking on the vicinity of Gormley. On the Recreation Center, we had a daylighting project which essentially took about 80, 90 properties out of the floodplain. So, deepened the channel and remapped that area. I think the city contributed a few thousand dollars in order for the project's scope to be extended all the way down here to the South Cuplet to remap that area. So, that's kind of a big deal, is it taking away all those properties within the 100-year floodplain, all the way down there to the South Cuplet. And there's actually some properties around the west side of Main Street that were formerly within the 100-year floodplain, which have since been removed as part of that project. So, just wanted to start with that tidbit, but looking at Chapter 5, this is really the portion of the zoning code where we regulate the floodplain. So, provides for the regulations for all the development within these special flood hazard areas, which are also called 100-year floodplanes. So, within that chapter, there's methods for reducing flood loss, and it also lays out kind of the duties and responsibilities of the floodplain administrator, which also happens to be the zoning administrator with Community Development. Also lays out a process for appeals and variances within that chapter for floodplain-related development, and also includes standards for new construction, whether that be residential construction, or commercial construction, or substantial improvements to existing buildings. Lays out standards for those within that chapter. So, the reason we're here amending the flood hazard areas section of the zoning code was Community Development Department was contacted early this year by Idaho Department of Water Resources. And they're really the entity, statewide entity, that regulates, or is tasked through FEMA for regulating floodplain development and amending ordinances. So, contacted by the State Floodplain Coordinator, they indicated that the floodplain ordinance review was going to be conducted for the city, and they, at the time, they were reviewing about 50 ordinances statewide. And NFIP, which is the National Flood Insurance Program, which we are members of ever since about 2003, they like to review everybody's ordinances about every 10 years. Last time we had a review was about 2004, so it's been a little bit over 10 years for us. So, National Flood Insurance Program, a little bit about that, it really allows federally-backed flood insurance for all structures within the city of Moscow. And we go above and beyond the typical requirements of that program, so the citizens are able to achieve a 15% citywide reduction in their flood insurance rates. And this is regardless of whether or not they're required to carry flood insurance being part of the 100-year floodplain, or there's a lot of people that choose to carry flood insurance which are outside of the 100-year floodplain, which technically aren't required to, but they do that anyway. They can still get a 15% reduction in their rates because we participate in this program and go above and beyond the typical baseline for the flood insurance program. And being part of this program requires certain minimum requirements, and one of those is that your ordinance be up to date. And so, a little bit of background on why we're here. Looking on, we were later contacted in April 2015 with a little bit of feedback from Idaho Department of Water Resources. They had indicated that we needed to update some language and do a little bit of restructuring within our current ordinance. One of the main areas, we're adding some definitions within the definition section. We needed to amend some of that language. We had to delete a couple of definitions and a little bit of restructuring in that area, but it was mainly just updating some of the language of the definitions. Some of the state code references were out of date. Previously, the requirement that you carry a floodplain ordinance through municipalities was under Local Land Use Planning Act with the state statutes. Now, it's under Militia and Military Affairs. So, needed to update that. That's where our disaster management provisions come from, under state code. We had to correct, we had formerly, we had flood insurance rate maps that were referenced from the 80s. Well, we've since updated that. Our current rate study is from 2002. So, we had to update some of those numbers. Also add some information about variance and appeal procedures within this chapter. Manufactured homes, every time we submit an annual report to FEMA to have them check some of the things that we're doing with the program, this is one of the things that we get dinged on, or they let us know this is out of compliance. If you have manufactured homes within the 100-year floodplain, they do a substantial improvement, and they like to have these things having a permanent foundation or secured to the ground, so they don't float away and cause obstruction downstream. So, we've updated that section. And also subdivision standards, we had all of those requirements within our subdivision ordinance, but they'd like to see it in one succinct place, so we've updated this chapter to reflect our current subdivision standards. So, we've worked with legal to update our ordinance with all the proposed changes. September 2015, we had Idaho Department of Water Resources, sent them the ordinance. They reviewed and confirmed that we were meeting all the NFIP requirements, and Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing, which happened on October 14th, and they recommended approval of the ordinance as presented to city council. And like I mentioned before, the item's scheduled for public hearing at the council's upcoming November 16 meeting. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have on this.
Art, questions?
Leaping through it, it looks like a whole lot of language got cleaned up. It reads a lot better, and I didn't follow through to all of the references and other parts of the code, but it looks much cleaner and looks like just a good cleanup of everything to keep all of the administrators and departments up above us happy. Looks good to me.
Yeah, it looks like there's a lot of changes, but in reality, there's not a whole lot of substantive changes. It's just like you said, cleaning up some of the current language, a little bit of restructuring, and then if you don't, if you look at it in non-track changes, it actually flows a lot better, a lot more user-friendly, so.
Walter.
Thank you, Wayne. Of the changes, Mike, how much is prescribed to us by state or federal, and how much did we do?
Well, you have a checklist that they, when they originally hired a consultant to go through and look at all the NFIP requirements, and they go through a checklist, and those are all the mandatory requirements that we had taken care of. So, within the definition section, there were a lot of definitions that were required, and some of them were optional. Well, the State Floodplain Coordinator had come up with a model ordinance, and whenever, you know, going through the required changes, whenever we'd compare the model ordinance with our ordinance, and maybe it was a little bit clearer, or it was a better definition, or, you know, the structure of the model ordinance was a little bit better than what we currently have, you know, it's 12, 13 years old. So, we ended up making those changes as well. So, required changes probably make up about three-quarters, and then the rest are just for clarification and be able to, a little bit more user-friendly in moving through it.
Are there any, where when you were going through doing this, the city staff said, while we're in here, let's change this?
No, it was just looking at the model ordinance and then looking at the requirements. So, it, yeah, a lot of it's just cleaning up some of the current language, and, you know, the NFIP program and the model ordinance have just updated a lot of the language, but it's just been minor.
And it reads a whole lot better as a result.
I'm gonna give Art the credit for having read every word of it. I did not.
Did.
But, people in Moscow, in the 100-year floodplain area and other areas, can still build and remodel. Nothing in here precludes that.
Correct, correct, yep.
And then, is there any retroactive impact on people in adopting this?
No.
Does it create a situation where we need to go out and talk to 306 Cherry Street and say, by the way, we just passed a new ordinance, and you need to do this?
No, most of the requirements are going to stay the same. It's just adding some definitions, you know, updating some of the language, but when you get down to it, the requirements are virtually the same as they were before.
Okay, well, it's a lot of work to make it read better.
Did. I don't know that I read it as thoroughly as Art did. I scanned it. I did notice that there was definitely some proofreading errors in it from the last time that it was written that were caught this time, so that's, that was really good. And then Walter kind of asked the other question I had, and that was that there's really no change or financial impact upon the homeowners' flood insurance policies, correct?
None, no.
Okay, that's good then. Anything else?
I'm fine with moving it forward.
Okay, let's move that forward to a public hearing for November 16th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, why don't you come on up? Let's go ahead and get yours, your dispersment report done. I apologize, I did start a couple minutes early. You were okay. I was going by that clock, and it's still a couple minutes fast, so.
That means we'll get through early.
Oh, I should've gone by the odd bad time.
All right. This is, this reports for the dispersments for the month ending September 30th, 2015. And the reason it comes to you later than normal is because each September, we have to do the crude entries for September, which means that we do payables up through last week, and a lot of those times, the invoices are sitting around, or they don't come through the mail until later in October. So, when those are dated, we can't, we put those into the 2015 fiscal year, last budget year, because they have September invoices on them, and we pay them in October. So, we do that once a year, and the report gets to be a little more elongated, and the financial impact doesn't change a lot, except that the dispersments look larger than normal, and they are. Okay, so I wanted to highlight that. Payroll didn't change much. It's, it has the two payroll runs, $930,000, $943. The dispersments, total expenditures is $3,357,216. And I'm gonna cap, capture most of that in the following categories, which represents 89% of it. So, again, payroll, the $930,000, $943. The professional services is $514,539. That's a big number, so I'm gonna go through a couple of things that we did, not little, but big things. One is the generator at the fire station, that was about $52,000. 1912 lighting, $19,000. We finally made a final payment. It was a warranty deal for the Whitewater Construction Company, and that was for the swimming pool slides, and that was $67,000. Sixth and Jackson Street cleanup with Terragraphics, $9,000. Some printer designer for design is $15,000, that's a pretty big item. Smart Transit, $30,000. Well, well number 10, the booster stations and the chamber contractor are the majority of those big ones, and then there's a lot of little ones. Next is sanitation, $498,363. That's two payments to Leita, two payments to Finley Buttes for transport because of the accrual issue that I'm talking about. Contractual payments, $50,914. Those contractual payments include Heart of the Arts, Humane Society, the Magar Building, Janitorial. And we also, to your interest, the affordable housing, the $21,000 bucks. Supplies, $124,438. Construction, $245,578. A lot of that is sidewalk improvements, A Street, well number 10, shop floor, D Street, water main, re-roof the Egan system, which was $14,700. That was a final payment for a total project on that, by the way, was $29,400. Vehicles, $56,430. That was a water vehicle that, also it included the flatbed on it, and a street oil trailer. Utilities, $178,941. Again, double payments on that because of the accruals, you have two payments, so one that the actual, that we pay in August, and the one in September, but they're done in, or excuse me, September for August, and October for September because of the way we get those bills. Equipment, $30,111. Improvements, $356,955. Insurance, $7,192, which is basically COBRA payments, and then.
Gone back up to improvements.
Sure.
What were those?
Good thing I have my cheat sheet here. Bus shelters is one, $49,200. Anatech Labs, Coral Lake Communication where HP Server Blades, I think that's for IS. Duke's Route Control, $49,000. Phase 1 of the booster stations was $11,000. Northwest Tank Repair, partial payment, $15,000. Whitney Equipment for the South Lift Station, about $3,400. Street signs and barricades, $9,300 bucks. Library gutter, $3,400 bucks. Park benches, $6,000. Catch basins and cast iron stuff, $3,000.
Do you hear anything about all the remodeling we're doing on the second floor?
Third floor? That's done in-house, and so that'll be materials.
Okay.
So, we're doing a lot of that in-house.
Okay.
So, see if there's another big one here? Yeah, there's a big one that's worth mentioning. Plan and Engineering Construction for Cured-in-Place Rehab Project, that's the sewer line sleeves. I took a picture of that with Les McDonald, that's pretty cool.
How much was that?
That was $227,339, and money well spent, by the way, I think. See, where was I? Insurance, $7,192. So, the total of those categories is $2994,404, which represents 89%. And with that, I have the dispersments for the month for you guys to sign.
Any questions?
Not many.
Nope.
These double months look crazy.
Yeah. It's a bit confusing because, you know, you get the accruals going, and we accrue everything on a modified accrual. What that means is that we pay our invoices in September for, or October for September invoices. Conversely, we also do the same thing with revenue. So, we'll get our state shared revenues, we get our property tax receipts, we get our liquor tax, all that stuff is in October for September, so we end up doing the same thing for that.
So, is September 30 closed out, or almost?
We're still working on it. We will continue to be working on that through November. Our goal is to get a trial balance to the auditors by mid to late November, so we've got to get everything closed out so we can start doing the internal review in our office. And we can't do that until everything's put together, so we're kind of pushing.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
And the next item is going to be presented to us by Alyssa Anderson, and that is the Office of Highway Safety, as well as the Traffic Enforcement Mobilization Program, and Chief Duke will also be joining us on that. And welcome, both of you. Thanks, good to see you.
Good afternoon. This is an annual agenda item that we bring forth to you. We've participated in this program for many years.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years?
I just, I was gonna say, how many, we've been doing this like forever.
Well, fifteen years.
Just fifteen years.
Okay, thank you for that correction, Walter.
So, before you today, we have the agreement to renew our safety enforcement for the next year, or not safety enforcement, but we call them special mobilizations. There are all kinds of different words. So, the revenue on this usually is around anywhere from $20,000 to $34,000. It's averaged over the last few years, depending upon how many mobilizations we've been able to do.
I'm losing you. Speak up just a little bit, Alyssa.
So, the revenue that we receive for reimbursement on the overtimes has averaged anywhere between $20,000 to $34,000, depending upon how much we've been able to participate. And I'll let David kind of go over with you the highlights of the program.
Well, again, this year, the Office of Highway Safety's come forth and put out a Traffic Enforcement Mobilization Agreement, which is in your packet. And they use this tool as just a foundation to see which departments throughout the state will partner with them for 2016. It seems like it's going to be following the same as last year. We'll have emphasis on impaired driving, distracted driving, seatbelt enforcement. They also included in the agreement this year, school zones, and enforcement or education on laws directly and specific to motorcycles, pedestrians, and bicyclists. So, I'm looking forward to see what mobilizations they might have included in that and take part in that. Officers will sign up. They are reimbursed at an overtime rate for directed hours that the state will show. The bad part about is our funding, we can't click into funding request until we say accept the TMA. So, that's why we're bringing it forth here first without specific mobilizations, but last year, we were able to participate in seven. Of those seven, we received $12,400 in overtime. Of that amount of grant time, our officers were able to make 882 traffic contacts. Out of those traffic contacts, we were able to arrest three fugitives from justice, take 10 suspended drivers off the road, issue 74 uninsured motorists, 69 speeding tickets, and two DUI arrests. So, it is worthwhile that if we didn't have this grant, those contacts wouldn't be in front of us, or we wouldn't be able to be assisting our community with these extra efforts. Also, we are granted overtime, or not overtime, but on-duty directed time, that at a rate of $20 an hour, we can apply for funding through certain equipments on their list. This last year, we were able to buy a LiDAR radar, which was valued at a little less than $2,000. So, that also helps us with this mobilization. But we're bringing it forward. We meet all the assurance and certifications, as we have done in the past, and that we would ask the council's approval to seek this TMA, approve it, and then apply for funding. We set aside this year $17,000 in federal grant funds for this mobilization effort.
Okay. Anything, Walter?
Yeah, it's obviously a good program that we take advantage of. I'm a little puzzled in that the agreement we've got in here doesn't have any dollar amounts in it.
Correct.
Is it?
Floating.
What keeps us from, if we had the bodies, which we don't, running overtime every day of the year and claiming a quarter million dollars' worth of overtime?
Well, we have to request funding on each mobilization. What we're asking is the upfront.
So, it's done as a mobilization package?
Package.
And they approve it, and then you do it?
Correct.
Okay, so this is just the general agreement that you plan to request the mobilizations?
Yes, sir.
Just to participate in the program.
Okay. And then, if I may, the overtime is effectively a pass-through from the grant to the city to the employee that worked it.
Yes, sir.
And it's the straight time where you can claim against somebody that's already on shift, being paid by the city, and you can buy equipment. Is that what I understand?
Yes, what we'll do is if we do have staffing, and there are certain times, we'll have an officer work two, three hours during their shift directly toward just mobilizations, take them out of the call rotation, and then for every hour, we get a $20 credit toward a purchasing equipment.
And they also reimburse it time and a half, including the benefit package, so.
For the overtime?
Yes.
At List, you recited, seems like a darn good bang for the buck on this program.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's fantastic.
Is this essentially the same program as it's been every year, and without really hardly any changes?
They've, we didn't used to be able to, last year was the first year that it had actually been an online program, and that we could go in and work through it that way before we had to email, or fax, or whatever. So, everything is online now, which makes it a lot easier, and it can, all the reports can be submitted online, so it saves time in getting the reimbursements back.
That would be crazy not to recommend approval, that's for sure. So, the committee will recommend approval.
To consent?
Chief?
Just one thing I forgot, there is no match, it's all.
There's what?
There is no match to the city. This is just general money coming in, there is no requirement to add anything else above and beyond what is provided.
Okay, very good. Put this on the consent agenda. Okay, thank you very much. That's all the items that we have. We have one report, I think Rod, are you going to give that as opposed to Les McDonald?
Yes.
Les does not, he's out today.
This is the Southeast Moscow Water and Sewer District, it's a contract status report, correct?
Correct. Good afternoon. Last Public Works and Finance Committee meeting, we had this, started this conversation, but Southeast Moscow Waters and Sewer District had, the board had not met yet to determine whether they wanted to renegotiate the contract, or perhaps pursue dissolution of the district. Since that time, their board has met. I met with Lois Pritchett today, and their board indicated they wish to negotiate new terms with the city for continuing contracting for the treatment and the flow of it.
Can you hear Rod back there, Bill?
Good.
Rod, this mayor's trying to hear this too, so go ahead and speak up for him.
I'd met with Lois, and so we talked about that their board desires to continue to contract with the city for sewage treatment. And there's some issues that we still need to work on. We started talking about some issues about, the district has a need to create some revenue because they have some administrative services that they're going to need to fund, and trying to figure out how we could help facilitate that. We also talked about, you know, do we charge with the pass-through flows that we talked about? And with some way to get some revenue for them. Our administrative fees have changed a bit. We're going to need a little bit more to cover our costs, just things have changed. And we've also discussed about what do we do about, as the city grows and they grow into the district, and adjusting the boundaries of the district. So, we have a few issues we need to address, and they seem more than willing to want to keep going.
Okay, Walter?
Couple of things, and you can pass this back to Les. I talked to Les about some of the changes that were being thought about in the vein of what you're already mentioning. I would like to see if we could get Ridgeview Drive and Walros, which are in the city, out of the district. In other words, reduce the district's boundaries.
Why would, why do you want to do that?
Why would you want to have them in?
What was the reason for putting them in in the first place?
Because that's the only way to get their wastewater back to the city, was to go through the district. They still do, but we're going to have an agreement where it'll be a pass-through to move that stuff through the district. And the contemplation is that Ridgeview 2, that what I've heard from staff, is in the city now. It will be developed when Thompsons get ready to develop it, but they are not anticipating the district would expand their boundaries to take it in like they did with Ridgeview 1. To get consistency.
I agree with you, and I think this begs back to a comment that I haven't already made, and that is that why is anything that's already in the city, as we go into this contract, that's in the city limits, why would it be in the, it's a kind of double jeopardy, almost?
That's why I'm suggesting it come out of the district.
Yeah.
And then, some of them were in the district, and then the city annexed them and moved out.
They had to be in the district because it was part of the bonding of the district, and Ridgeview was paying the bonds. The bonds are paid off, they don't have any debt.
Right.
So, there's no need anymore. So, I would like to have that looked at.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
You all make trip on some reason why it's not a good idea. The other thing that was being discussed was, again, with Ridgeview, but this time with Ridgeview 2, that the hookup fees. with Ridgeview Two, that the hookup fees would be a hundred and seventy percent of the city hookup fee.
Mm-hmm.
And that seventy percent would move to the district. If I were the developer, I'd scream bloody murder that I'm developing these lots in the city of Moscow and people that buy my lots have got to pay a hundred and seventy percent to hook up their sewer. If I were a lot buyer, I'd scream bloody murder that I didn't want to hook up and pay a hundred and seventy percent because I'm outside the district but flowing through the district. I do think they need to pay, or the city needs to pay somehow, the district for flow through. I agree with that. I, I get that part, but I, I'm not sure that the hookup fee is the way to go about it.
I don't disagree.
So just a couple of, a couple of thoughts.
And we are, and we are addressing that in the way that.
A couple of thoughts.
We funded before, but I don't see the hundred and seventy, but I'd say there's a hundred percent, whatever the cost is for the hookup, seventy percent would be going if they're in the district.
That's not how Les explained it.
Okay. That's how I was reading it.
Les explained it as a hundred and seventy percent.
Okay, but what, the new version of the contract that we're working on, we're talking about whatever the hundred percent fee is, seventy-five, seventy percent of that.
Okay.
When the district, going to the district for their capital fund?
That's different.
Okay.
We'll see what you bring forward.
Yep.
Going to be able to get this done by the time the contract extension expires?
We've, and that'll be at the end of January. We hope to have this before the end of the year.
Can't get it done by December.
Can't. It's October.
Okay.
I'm optimistic.
You want it done so you can vote on it or you don't?
All right, that's it. Do you have anything else for us, Rod?
No, we'll try to have it for you in December.
Okay, that'd be good. All right.
I'm good.
Anything else to come before this committee? As we stand adjourned. Thank you.